Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Karen Goh.
Good evening and welcome to the 5:15 City Council Meeting of February 21st, 2018. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Goh.
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Parlier.
Here.
Thank you, well, welcome. It's great to see so many of you here, and we have a lot of students here today from Bakersfield College. Mr. Professor Bond's class, it's waved, welcome. Here's for English, Professor Holmes' class, Political Problems class, welcome. And then we have a whole row here. Assemblyman Rudy Salis' Young Assembly Members Program, and we're going to get to hear from a few of them. So, welcome to all of you, thank you for engaging in the civic process. At this time, Father Larry Toski, pastor from Our Lady of Guadalupe, is going to offer the invocation. I had the privilege recently, just a few weeks ago, to spend some time at Our Lady of Guadalupe School during Catholic Schools Week, and Father Larry was there encouraging our young people. So, thank you so much for being willing to share with us today. And then, following the invocation, Mr. Donald Laura, Korean War veteran who served in the U.S. Army from 1951 to '53, will lead us in the pledge. Mr. Laura sang the National Anthem at the U.S. Capitol Rotunda in November of 2014 when he traveled with other Honor Flight veterans to visit the Capitol and to visit the memorials built in their honor. He became a social media hit overnight when Congressman McCarthy posted a Facebook video of Mr. Laura singing in the Capitol, and it had nearly 72,000 hits. So, we're honored to have both Father Larry and Mr. Laura here. Father Larry, would you please come now? Please stand.
Let us pray. Almighty and eternal God, you have revealed your glory to all nations. God of power and might, wisdom and justice, through you authority is rightly administered, laws are enacted, and judgment is decreed. Dear God, we thank you for your love in creating us in your image, for creating us to live together in society. We thank you for our country founded on the recognition of each person's inalienable rights to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. We thank you for the role which you call each of us to fulfill in maintaining a society that is just, peaceful, and respectful. We thank you for the leaders called to share in governing us in society with an authority that derives from your divine authority over all. We pray for the President of these United States, for the Governor of our State of California, for legislators, judges, and elected civil officials. We pray especially this evening for our mayor and city council members, and for all others who are entrusted to guard and promote our public welfare and the common good. May they be enabled by your powerful protection to discharge their duties with honesty and ability. Grant the council members health, peace, concord, and fortitude, that they may fulfill wisely and prudently the tasks assigned to them. Direct them in a manner that honors you and serves well the individual needs and the common good of the people of Bakersfield. May all residents affected by items on this evening's agenda benefit from the outcome and cooperate together in peace for the true well-being of all involved. We offer this prayer, Lord, with trust in your providence and mercy, for you are our God and Father forever and ever. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Father Larry. Mr. Laura?
We have the privilege to honor our great country with the Pledge of Allegiance, so let's stand together and give that salute. Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your dedicated service to our country, Mr. Laura, and Father Larry. Thank you for your service to our community, for enriching the lives of our children in our community and families. You're welcome to leave any time, but you're welcome to stay and join us. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. In keeping with council policy, council members are not allowed to send or receive electronic communications during the meeting. We ask you to be courteous in the use of cameras and videos. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but it isn't allowed during other times of the meeting. For safety reasons and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chambers. We appreciate your cooperation very much. Madam Clerk, would you please read the first item?
Public Statements.
At this time, we'll receive public statements. All statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per topic. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statements, please give those to the clerk, and she'll give them to the council. We ask you to avoid any behavior that disrupts the meeting. We're very interested in your issues, but due to the public notice requirement of the Brown Act, the council can't take action when an item isn't on the agenda. The council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. If you're here to speak on hearing items nine or 10, now isn't the time to speak. You'll be given an opportunity later when that item is called in the meeting. Next item, please, Madam Clerk. Whoops, I'm sorry. You're actually going to call our next public speaker, please.
Mayor, we have three speaker cards this evening, two regarding the same subject, one regarding a separate subject. The first speaker is Dennis Fox regarding item 8P.
Welcome, Mr. Fox. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, I'm Dennis Fox. And we have a problem, we had some fires over on the coast, and they lost their water. Also, the Water Agency says, when the big one hits, we're going to be without water down here because of no electricity to pump for a couple of weeks. So, I was just thinking contingency planning, you've gotten some money from Dow Chemical on that problem, and maybe have some filters, have some portable ability, and have that they could be towed by a fire engine or a pumper unit, and people can line up and get some water as it's pumped out of canals, lakes, pools, whatever, you know. So, we would have something. And local stuff that you donate and save would be your matching grant, get the rest from the Office of Emergency Services from the state. I would like to have seen this done on a larger scale through the zones of benefit. As you know, the citizens of Bakersfield pay and are not getting the benefit, they're buying water for other people. And that's not really in keeping with the Proposition 218. And so, I would thought maybe if it got broadened out perhaps, but it probably won't because it's going to stay the way it is. But it would be, bring it to where we're being taxed, we would be getting a benefit, I think, which is in keeping with that law. But I think this is not earth-shattering, but I think it's something that we should have for contingencies, case of fire, flood, and the big one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Next speaker, please.
The next two speakers will be speaking on the Young Assembly Member Program with Rudy Salis. The first speaker is Paula Rodriguez.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Good afternoon. My name is Paula Rodriguez from Golden Valley High School.
I'm Noah Garcia from South High School.
We're here representing Assemblymember Rudy Salis with the Young Assembly Members Program.
We just want to let you guys know what the Young Assembly Member Program is. We go to different events around the community such as this one, and hope to build bonds in the community and learn more about the legislative process through this program.
Our hope for us as students is to become more civically engaged, and things like here are meetings to just learn more about how our community works.
And we hope to be able to talk to you guys after the meeting today, hopefully take a couple of photos and ask a few questions.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please. Oh, I'm sorry, we have Councilmember Rivera.
If there are high schools in the audience, I'd be remiss if I did not encourage them to apply for the Bakersfield Youth Commission. So, if you guys aren't aware of that, Google it, or ask me or any council member after the meeting, but we have some vacancies, and we'd love to have you on there if you guys are interested. Yeah, you can take my seat.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next agenda item.
Under Workshops, we have the Valley Children's Healthcare Outpatient Clinic.
Thank you. And we are privileged today to have Tim Curley, Director of Community and Government Relations from Valley Children's Healthcare. Would you please come forward at this point and give us your presentation?
And there is a PowerPoint, I'm not sure, oh, there it goes. Okay, thank you. Well, while it's coming down, I just want to say good evening to Mayor Goh and Vice Mayor Smith and the other members of the city council, and carving out some time on your agenda tonight for me to give you an update on Valley Children's Healthcare. If you don't know who we are, hopefully after the next 10 or 15 minutes, you got a good sense of who we are. And then, most importantly, you get a good sense of what our commitment is to Bakersfield and to supporting the health and well-being of kids in this community. And I want to begin by recognizing really all of what you have done through your careers and your interests and your passions. I was looking at your bios, and whether it's serving as a youth sports coach, or serving as a teacher, or being on a school board, or serving as a commissioner for Kern First Five, you have all obviously made a commitment to kids in your own special way, and really appreciate what you all do in support of kids as well. So, wanted to start there. All right, so we're looking at what we're doing here in Bakersfield. Let me see if I can make this work. No, that's not going to do it. So, just to advance, I guess I roll.
Staff, can somebody help him with that, please?
Thank you.
We have our technical expert here.
Single left click. All right, excellent. Okay, thank you. Okay, so, just a little bit about who we are. We are a pediatric specialty care network dedicated to being the nation's best healthcare network for kids, and we take that very seriously. We're on a 10-year journey, we're about four or five years into it, to being the nation's best pediatric healthcare network. And this is a picture of Dr. Thomas, who's one of our pediatric intensivist physicians who's providing care to a patient over at Bakersfield Memorial Hospital, and we'll talk about that partnership in a minute. We are the only pediatric specialty care network located in all of central California, and we're actually one of the largest of our kind throughout the country, which is kind of unique for an organization like ours located in a relatively non-urban area. Most of our sister organizations are in San Francisco, LA, Denver, Boston, Philadelphia, but we're proud to be right here in the Central Valley of California. And we have a large service area, about 45,000 square miles, and it's home to about 1.3 million kids. So, it's a big responsibility and a big charge. We're anchored by our 358-bed hospital in Madera, but as you'll see here soon, we have, our footprint really includes every county within the Central Valley of California, and again, Kern County is a big part of that. Why does it matter that we're here? Well, probably the obvious is, we're here to take care of sick kids and make sick kids well, and we take that charge very important, or very seriously, and there's really no other organization doing what we do, and so we have a very big role to play in making sure that our kids are well. And also, we look at ourselves as an economic asset to the region as well as organizations, businesses potentially look at maybe coming into the valley. It's probably nice for them to see that they have a high-quality pediatric specialty care network like Valley Children's. So, we like to think of ourselves as an economic asset as well for the region. We're driven by obviously our commitment to be the best, and in order to be the best, we need to be sure we're providing the best quality care, and that's in the end what it's all about for this organization. And what you see here are some testaments to that commitment to quality, and I'm not going to look at all of them, but the biggest one on the screen there is recognition by U.S. News &amp; World Report, which puts out a nation's best children's hospital award every year, and this year we were recognized as being one of the nation's best for pediatric gastroenterology, pediatric diabetes and endocrinology, and pediatric orthopedics. And our mission really is to be the best in every category that they award, and we're certainly well on our way to doing that. The other award I was going to mention is the Beacon Award, which is just below the Best Children's Hospital Award, and that Beacon Award is given to children's hospitals who provide exceptional nursing care in their pediatric intensive care units. And these are the units within a children's hospital or within any hospital, and Bakersfield Memorial has a pediatric intensive care unit, where you're going to find the sickest of the sick children, and we've made a special commitment at our organization to make sure that we're doing the best for those kids, and we've been recognized through this national award called the Beacon Award. So, we're very proud of that. In addition to providing quality care, we want to make sure that that care is as available as possible to as many kids throughout our region as possible. So, it's 1.3 million kids. Our organization has made a commitment that if we can get every kid within 30 minutes or 30 miles, that would be great. It's a stretch, but that's really what we're driven to do, and as you can see through the map here, represented by the different shapes and sizes, the triangles, the squares, and the stars, and the circles, those all represent where we either have a physical presence of our own, either through a specialty care center, or hospital beds, or primary care providers, or we have a partnership with an existing healthcare provider to help them make sure they're providing the best level of care to kids as possible. And I'll talk about a little bit more what we're doing in Kern County, but you can see the cluster in Kern County, Ridgecrest to Hatchpee, and then the Bakersfield area, and this is a large priority for our organization. So, looking a little bit at Bakersfield, just gives you a sense of the number of kids we treat just out of the city of Bakersfield. And in 2017, we saw on an outpatient basis over 15,000 kids from Bakersfield needing specialized pediatric care, and that was provided either here in Bakersfield at our specialty care center, or if the children had to travel up to Madera, it was provided up in Madera. And it's interesting to see that only three other cities account for more kids than Bakersfield does, and it's Fresno, Madera, and Clovis. Outside of that, Bakersfield is where we see a large percentage of our kids. And then, on an inpatient basis, these are kids that had to come up to Madera and spend at least one night at the hospital for whatever reason. It was 779 kids, and only Fresno had more kids than Bakersfield. Now, our goal, as you'll see, is to try to make sure as many of those kids can be treated here locally and do not need to make a trip up to Madera. So, how are we doing that? A couple of things. One, we've operated a pediatric specialty care clinic in Bakersfield now here for a number of years, the 34th Street Clinic, and you can see what we're providing there, and it's been a very busy clinic. It's very close to Bakersfield Memorial Hospital, and what we wind up doing is rotating a number of our pediatric subspecialty physicians from Madera down here on a regular basis to see patients down here. One example would be our pediatric infectious disease specialists who are down here, I think, the first Tuesday of the month, and that day is dedicated solely to Valley fever patients. So, we will see between 22 to 23 patients in an eight-hour clinic day in the clinic in Bakersfield. Now, we're still unfortunately having to see Valley fever patients up in Madera who need a higher level of care, but again, hopefully, down the road, more and more of those patients will be able to, A, prevent from getting Valley fever in the first place, but if they do, more and more can be treated down here in Bakersfield. We're going to transition a lot of that 34th Street programs and services over to a new facility on Stockdale Highway. It's going to be the Eagle Oaks Specialty Care Center, and I've got two pictures here. One is the picture of what it looks like today, the other is what it's going to look like when it's fully completed. And we're on schedule to complete it in August, and hopefully we'll be occupying it October 1st. So, I'm going to throw that date out there. We'll get back to you with a confirmed date, but right now, we're hoping for a grand opening October 1st, and so far, we're on schedule, and we're really looking forward to occupying that facility. It's going to give us a lot more space than where we're at on 34th Street, and at the same time, we're going to be looking to recruit physicians up to hopefully eight permanent pediatric subspecialty physicians to be in this market full-time, providing services to kids so they don't need to make the trip up and down from Madera. In addition to specialty care, we're committed to primary care as well. That's one of the biggest challenges that kids throughout the valley face, is finding access to primary care, and it's particularly tough for kids who are publicly insured. In our organization, between 75% to 80% of the kids that we treat, either on an inpatient or an outpatient basis, are covered by Medi-Cal. So, Medi-Cal is a critical program for our patients and for their families and for our organization. Primary care is a huge challenge for a lot of these families, and so we're trying to do our part to support that. It includes the Stockdale Pediatrics Clinic. This is a picture of Dr. D. Nicola. We also provide pediatrics, primary pediatrics at San Dimas Pediatrics. That is Dr., I think, Gida, or Joka, I can't recall, but she's a local-based pediatrician providing services here in Bakersfield, and we'll continue to do that. We also operate in urgent care, and so that's an important part, kind of our footprint here in Bakersfield. And then, in addition to the clinical care, and I think the clinical care will always be core to what we do, and I think it'll be one of the more valuable pieces for Bakersfield, we also recognize that we have a responsibility as the only pediatric specialty care network in central California to try to get ahead of a lot of the things we wind up seeing at the hospital. So, are there things that we can be doing either to prevent children from needing to come up to Madera, or prevent them from getting sick in the first place? So, preventing them from having to come up to Madera speaks to the partnership we have with Dignity Health, and we've been working with them for a long time to support what they're doing at Memorial Hospital for children. It's our pediatric intensivist physicians who staff their pediatric intensive care unit. We also have other physicians who work with their team managing the care of kids throughout the hospital. We're doing work with them on cardiac services and look in the future to grow that partnership as well. That's been very important to us. And then, beyond the clinical care, again, it's trying to get ahead of some of the things we wind up seeing at the hospital, so we're in conversations with your, with the county Public Health Department, particularly around Valley Fever prevention. Some of our pediatric infectious disease specialists will be here on April 7th to provide some education to the primary care community in Bakersfield to make sure that the pediatricians and other primary care providers who see kids are able to recognize early enough the early signs of Valley fever, and to make a diagnosis early enough to ensure the best outcome is possible for those kids who wind up getting Valley fever. And then, we're also interested in supporting any effort around prevention as well, so that's an important piece of it. Kern Help Me Grow is an initiative that has been funded through First Five Kern County, and that looks to make sure that infants get the recommended schedule of developmental screenings that have been recommended through the American Academy of Pediatrics. So, there's a real neat collaborative that's funded in part through First Five Kern, and it's done in partnership with a number of local organizations, and we're a part of that, and look to be, to play an important role in not only the early diagnosis, but when conditions are identified, making sure those children get treated as early as possible so they can be as successful as possible in school and in life. What is at stake? I think we probably are all pretty familiar with the challenges kids face in our region, from poor health status to the issues around poverty and the environment. We are certainly committed to working with anybody who also wants to work on those issues, and I think you've got a lot of traction and a lot of really neat things going on in Bakersfield and Kern County. I've been here all day, and I was meeting with a host of different organizations, community-based organizations, elected official offices, and there's really a commitment and a momentum here that I think you should all be proud of, because you're probably all playing a role some way or another, and we look forward to just being a bigger part of that moving forward, because we in the end really share the same goal. I mean, what you guys do here in the city council and what you're doing elsewhere in your lives is largely, I think, focused around creating the right environment and the right setting for kids to grow up and to be healthy, and we appreciate that work and look forward to being a part of that partnership. And it's always important to, I think, recognize the important role that the Carr brothers have played in not only supporting obviously Bakersfield and this community, but they've made a commitment to Valley Children's as well, and they're doing a lot of great work to promote our organization and to help raise funds for Valley Children's. So, I just wanted to recognize what they're doing, both of them together. And to close again with just a thank you to all of you for making the time and for the work you do on the city council and in your lives in support of kids, and I'll stop there and see if you have any questions or comments.
Thank you so much, Mr. Curley. We really appreciate your investment in our community. For our families not to have to travel is going to be something wonderful, and I know that you're already doing very good work in our community, but we're looking forward to the Eagle Oaks. Was privileged to be a part of the groundbreaking there and
Thanks for being there.
Doing a wonderful job there, and I know we have some council member comments. Vice Mayor Smith.
Thank you, and I thank you for the service you provide to the children in our community, and I have a personal relationship with Valley Children's in that I had appendix removed 50-plus years ago
Really?
Fresno, grew up in Fresno, so
Okay.
Appreciate your service to children for a long time.
All right, all right. Well, I'm glad we were there to help you.
I live within a half-mile of the new facility and been watching it go up and appreciate that
Yeah.
In the community. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Only one final question. Do you think the Carr brothers or George the Giraffe would be more popular? So, I miss seeing George here, but thank you so much.
We'll be sure to have George down when the center opens, when the clinic opens, for sure, and maybe one of the Carboys will be there as well.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks again. Bye.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Also under Workshops, item B, Amendment Number 1 to Resolution Number 127-17, rescinding the previously approved increases to water rates for fiscal years 2018, 2019, and 2019, 2020 for the city domestic water service area.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. I'm Art Chianello, the Water Resources Manager. Before you tonight is Amendment Number 1 to Resolution Number 127-17, which is rescinding the previously approved increases to water rates for fiscal years 2018 and 19, as well as 19 and 20, for the city domestic water service area. In order to pay for the capital costs and financing for this mandatory TCP capital improvement project that we're undergoing, as well as for the future operation and maintenance costs, on September 6th, 2017, the city council approved Resolution Number 127-17, which adopted increases to the water fees with the following schedule. A 16% increase was approved effective October 1st, 2017. A 13% increase was approved effective July 1st, 2018, and also finally, a 7.6% increase was approved to be effective July 1st, 2018. And also, finally, a 7.6% increase was approved to be effective July 1st, 2019. However, in January of 2018, the city reached a settlement in the ongoing TCP lawsuit, where the city recovered a gross settlement amount of approximately $82 million, and less legal fees and costs, for a net of approximately $54 million. This allows for the recovery of the capital costs to install the treatment vessels at the 35 city wells. The settlement proceeds will also allow for the replenishment of fund balance used for this project. As a result of the settlement, the city was able to pay off the previously issued bonds in the amount of $23 million, and to remove the rate restrictive bond covenants. Therefore, staff finds the previously adopted 13% water fee increase, which is to be effective July 1st, 2018, and the 7.6% increase, which is scheduled to be effective July 1st, 2019, no longer necessary to finance the mandatory remediation. The 16% rate increase, that's already in effect, and became effective October 1st, 2017, will be evaluated as we develop our operation and maintenance budget for the upcoming fiscal year. We'll be taking a look at some increased operation and maintenance costs that we will start incurring over the next few months, as this equipment comes online to remove TCP. Some of those costs will be increased electrical costs, increased sampling costs, and then, eventually, increased costs for Cal Water operation and maintenance labor for these sites. And also, in addition, we have to look at the potential for the return of a possible dry year and a drought. So, based on the information and evaluation, this 16% rate increase may be adjusted downward in the future. However, staff believes it is premature to take such action at this time. Therefore, the staff recommendation is to approve adoption of the amendment to resolution, rescinding both the 13% increase and the 7.6% rate increase. Thank you, and both myself and Finance Director Nelson Smith will be available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Chianello. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Art, and appreciate all of staff's work on this settlement, legal, city manager's office, and the water department. I think we have a good settlement, and I know you're working hard to get all those purifiers in, but yeah, it's great that we do not have to continue to increase rates. And so, I would move staff's recommendation, adoption of amendment to the resolution.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes. Thank you. Next item, please.
Consent calendar items 8A through 8S for approval.
No council member has asked to have anything removed. I don't believe anybody has a conflict of interest, so I will make a motion to approve consent calendar items 8A through 8S.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved.
Next item, please.
Consent calendar public hearing items 9A through 9E for approval.
It's now time for the consent calendar hearing. The purpose of this section is to vote on all of the items listed without, under the consent calendar hearing, in one motion, without further comment. If anyone would like to speak on any of these hearing items listed, the item must be removed from this portion of the agenda. If an item is removed, it will be placed at the end of the regular public hearings portion of the meeting. And at this time, I'll open consent calendar public hearings, items 9A through 9E. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to request that a hearing item be removed from the consent calendar? If so, please come forward. This isn't the time to take testimony, only to remove the matter from consent calendar hearings.
I'd like to ask that item 9E, General Plan Amendment Zone Change 17-0356, be removed from the consent calendar.
Thank you. Anyone else? We have a request from Councilmember Parlier to remove an item, that would be 9D.
Yes, Mayor.
So, at this time, consent calendar public hearings, item 9A through 9C, are now closed. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd make a motion to approve consent calendar items 9A through 9C.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. Our next item is the public hearing. Before I open the public hearing, I'll go over the presentation time policy. Each side will be allowed 15 minutes. It's 15 minutes for all speakers, so it's important that you identify yourself, make your statement quickly, so others may speak. We'll hear statements from those opposed to the staff recommendation first, then we'll hear from those who would like to speak in favor of the staff recommendation. If there's testimony from both sides, each side will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal. There's a clock on the wall behind me, which indicates 15 minutes. Please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and after 14 minutes, a yellow light will come on. At the end of 15 minutes, a red light will flash, indicating your time is up, and quickly end your statement. You may ask questions during your public, during that statement, but they won't be answered until the public hearing is closed. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give those to the clerk, and she'll provide copies to the council. We'd ask you to be courteous to others who wish to speak. Unless there's approval by the majority of the city council, there's a strict 15-minute time limit for all those in favor, or in opposition to staff's recommendation. So, please be concise, avoid repeating the remarks of the previous speakers. Madam Clerk, please read the first public hearing item.
A public hearing to consider general plan amendment zone change number 17-0212, application by McIntosh and Associates, representing property owner Girmehar Enterprises, Inc., Dr. Metab Singh, to change 5.68 acres from residential to commercial at the southeast corner of Taft Highway, SR 119, and Ash Road. The request was denied by the Planning Commission, and an appeal was filed by McIntosh and Associates.
Thank you. Ms. Kitchen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. City Clerk, could we get the presentation, please? Okay, let me get to our slide. Okay, as read by the clerk, this project is a request to change the existing land use entitlements from residential to commercial on a 5.5-acre portion of an approved 92-lot residential tract. As you can see, the project is located at the southeast corner of Taft Highway, which is an expressway, and Ash Road, which is an arterial. Therefore, any future development at this corner will be required to comply with the street improvement designs and complete streets policies of the city of Bakersfield, as well as CalStrand's approved development standards for Taft Highway. As you can also see, the site is surrounded on three sides by existing and planned residential development, including Lennar Tract Homes to the north, and several other tract homes that are currently under development directly to the east. The applicant, as shown in Figure 2 of your staff report, the property owner is asking to change just a portion of the existing residential tract map to commercial at the northern end of this map. The applicant's stated purpose for this request is to allow for future construction of a 61,000-square-foot shopping center, to possibly include a gas station, medical offices, and retail space. However, other than identification of potential locations for the commercial driveways and access points into this commercial area, the applicant is not proposing any specific internal site layout at this time. So, if approved, this request would also require the applicant to come back and revise that existing tract map below. The specific applications before you tonight include an amendment to the general plan from low-medium-density residential to general commercial, as well as a change in zoning from R2 multifamily to C1 neighborhood commercial. Now, these existing entitlements have been in place since 2006, when a GPA was completed, and shortly after that, the Planning Commission approved the existing tentative tract map for the 92 lots, and then, the site was annexed into the city for residential purposes in 2008. Now, whenever a property owner requests to amend the general plan, the state law requires that any request be carefully reviewed by staff to ensure consistency with the general plan, and with the city council's adopted policies, sound planning practices, and goals for our community. So, during this review process for this project, staff determined that the request presents several potential issues related to compatibility, site access and design, the project potentially being premature, and inconsistency with those general plan policies. So, we'll look at the first issue first, or the compatibility issue first. As noted previously, this project's site is a long, narrow strip of land that is adjacent to existing residential tract maps, and it has already been zoned for residential purposes. This existing mapping was designed to interconnect this tract with the adjacent residential tracts, which would also promote rockability within these future neighborhoods. This new request to carve out a commercial zoning on a portion of this tract would create conflicting land use entitlements on the site, because the existing approved tract and the proposed new commercial zoning would exist on the same property. Additionally, the proposed new commercial parcel, as you can see here, doesn't quite match up with the phase boundaries of the existing trap, and would create some incompatibilities. So, next, we'll look at site access. As this site is located at the corner of Taft Highway, which will be a future six-lane expressway, and Ash Road, which is a city arterial, there are specific distance requirements for right-turn lanes and commercial driveways at this site. These standards are in place to ensure appropriate and orderly traffic flow through this area. So, given this location within the long, narrow, and the long, narrow configuration of this parcel, staff has found that access via Ash Road would be somewhat limited. As such, the applicant has proposed a commercial lot that does not go deep enough to accommodate a direct commercial driveway on Ash Road, and therefore, the two yellow diamonds shown here are where the commercial driveways are proposed by the applicant, when they provided a preliminary conceptual layout. So, as you can see, these driveways are within that residential tract area to the south, and this design would ultimately result in a layout that will cause commercial traffic to travel through the future residential neighborhoods, both to the south and the north, in order to gain access to Ash Road and Taft Highway. This configuration also creates a potential point of conflict between the cars that would be traveling through that neighborhood to get into the commercial development. Specifically, residents traveling along the future residential streets may have confusing interactions with other vehicles that are coming in from Ash Road to the commercial driveway, and it would be unclear who would have the right-of-way within these local streets where these turn movements are being made. And it's plausible that cars would frequently queue also to get into the commercial site, causing a bit of a backup within the residential neighborhood. And this is why you typically don't see commercial driveways within neighborhoods. Additionally, Public Works has reviewed this request, and has noted that the proposed configuration does not meet city standards, because the proposed design does not meet the minimum distance requirements for the interfaces between commercial driveways and residential neighborhoods, and it does not allow enough frontage for the queuing of cars to enter and exit the commercial site. And finally, with regard to Taft Highway, CalStrand's standards require that there would only be one right-turn lane into this site, and as such, this would require any traffic coming westbound on Taft Highway to do a U-turn at that intersection, which also has related traffic impacts that Nick Fiddler, the Public Works Director, could speak to in more detail if you'd like. So, the next issue at hand is that this project appears to be premature. A review of the existing commercial entitlements in this area has showed that there's already a significant amount of existing vacant commercial property, both to the north and to the east, including over 71 acres of vacant commercial property within one mile of the site. To date, the applicant has not provided any information to show that there's a specific need for more commercial land at this time. Additionally, as this map shows, there's very little urban development south of Taft Highway, and that's historically been the case. The city hasn't moved that far yet. In fact, there are no commercial designations beyond the one near Acres Road that was approved several years ago, and even that one has yet to be developed. Staff is also aware of the changing market economy, and the overall commercial needs, and the changes that are coming with the increasing popularity of internet delivery services, and that there are already increasing amounts of vacant commercial space throughout the city. So, this market trend may change in the future. However, at this time, these factors, combined with the amount of existing commercial inventory in this area, appear to indicate that rezoning of this existing residential property may be premature. So, the next consideration is compatibility with our general plan. As we discussed, the applicant is requesting to change the city's adopted general plan to a different use than what was previously approved by the city council. Therefore, in accordance with state law, the request was reviewed for compatibility with the relevant policies of the general plan. And overall, staff found that the request is not compatible with a number of the city's general plan policies, and those are laid out in explicit detail in Attachment B of your administrative report tonight. So, this project was considered by the Planning Commission on September 7th, 2017, and based on the analysis that I've just laid out for you, staff recommended that the project be denied at this point. And the commissioners deliberated very carefully about this issue during that hearing, and requested clarification from the applicant and staff on access and design issues, and this item was discussed extensively. In the end, several commissioners stated that though they did not generally oppose commercial zoning, and we want to continue with our business-friendly practices, this particular project appeared to be premature, and necessitated additional work to address the issues related to design safety and compatibility. Commissioners also noted that the property has an existing tract map from 2007, and already has a right to develop this property as residential uses, and that the applicant has not demonstrated any immediate need or community benefit for the proposed change to commercial. In the end, the Planning Commission unanimously evoted to deny the project, and an appeal of this decision was filed by the applicant's representative McIntosh and Associates the next week. Staff subsequently met with the applicant's representative in November of 2017 to discuss a potential compromise, in hopes of finding a solution that could help address the compatibility and access concerns. Staff explained that the access to the proposed commercial area is limited because of the location at the intersection, and that is why this site has already been developed and mapped as part of a larger 19-acre residential tract that appropriately planned access points via the existing approved driveways further south. The applicant indicated that they would revise their request to reduce the size, or look at other methods, and potentially try to reduce the amount of traffic that would be generated by the site. Staff met with the applicant again in December, and was presented with a very conceptual drawing shown here, and this is included as Figure 8 in your admin report. However, that drawing didn't contain sufficient detail to determine if the access issues could in fact be resolved, and staff asked for additional information regarding the location of some of these residential tract maps, and potential remaining commercial driveways as shown here. And staff is aware of another map that was presented to several council members today, and we've looked at that. However, we haven't had time to look at it in sufficient detail to see if that meets the commercial standards. But in looking at it just a few moments ago, I noticed that it did still include those commercial driveways into this residential neighborhood, at least one, and showed a potential block wall where the second one was. However, any conceptual map shown to you tonight would not be guaranteed if this zone change request is approved, as the applicant is only requesting C1. So, they would not be locked into any specific design at this point. So, overall, staff concludes that the same considerations and issues remain, and the applicant has indicated to staff that the intention is to go forward with the original requests. request, as it was denied by the Planning Commission. Therefore, staff recommends that the council uphold the decision of the Planning Commission to deny this project at this time, and at some point in the future, it may be a better time to do the project after there's been further work on the design and to address the concerns. And with that, I'm available if you have any additional questions.
Thank you, Ms. Kitchen. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. How many people would like to speak in opposition of staff's recommendation? Please come forward to the microphone, identify yourself. Are there others besides Mr. McIntosh who wish to speak in opposition?
Yes.
How many others who would like to speak in opposition? Just raise your hand. So I don't see any others. Mr. McIntosh, we have 15 minutes for the group in opposition to staff's recommendation. Please introduce yourself.
Thank you. My name is Roger McIntosh. I'm with McIntosh &amp; Associates. I'm representing Germahar Enterprises Incorporated and Dr. Matav Singh this evening, and I'd like to use the overhead projector if I could. This appeal is to allow for a 5.68-acre site for C1. We're asking for C1 zoning to allow for 61,855 square-foot shopping center. We've gone through many iterations of site plan, back and forth with staff to try to come up with a resolution and answer their concerns. The last site that we submitted, and actually, we're appealing this site, is in your packet. I've got tabs on every item that I'm going to speak to. The first tab is just simply labeled "site." I wanted to address the comment about the access. Access to the site is provided for, we have two access points, one on Ash Road here and one on Taft Highway here. These two access points do meet the city standard. The city standard is that you can't have an access point closer than 200 feet from the curb return here. This distance is 200 feet, and the distance from a local street at city standard is no less than 150 feet. And as you can see, this distance is slightly larger than this distance here. So we do meet the city standard in separation from an arterial to a driveway and to a local street as well. On Taft Highway, the standard is more of a Caltrans standard in that in an expressway, they require the ability to put a bus stop here, and the bus stop would be provided here, and then there's a separation for a D-cell lane into the site at this location. This provides us with adequate access. If you are westbound on Taft Highway, you either make a U-turn and come into this access point here, or you take a left down Ash Road, come down, make a U-turn, and come back into the location here. If you are eastbound, you simply take a right into the site and back out. If you're southbound on Ash Road, you take a left and come into the site at this location. If you're northbound, obviously, you've got easy access off of Ash Road at this location. We feel that this is adequate. And also, in your packet there, labeled "access" is the city standard. It's 200 feet on an arterial and 150 feet to a local street on an arterial. You'll also see some comments in your staff report that it doesn't meet the proposed standard. This is the proposed standard, and the distances are the same, 200 feet from the corner and 150 feet to a local street. Staff also noted that the applicant submitted a lot line adjustment. We were forced to submit a lot line adjustment. We were told that the process would not be started unless we had a lot line submitted, a lot line adjustment submitted. So Dr. Singh spent about $10,000 in applying for that application, then only to find out that the recommendation was for denial, and we will be asking for a refund on that if this appeal is not upheld. This, again, I want to reiterate that this site plan is only conceptual in nature. This is not the time to submit a site plan and have it heard. We're not asking for this site plan to be approved. We're simply showing conceptually how access can get in and around the neighborhood and into the site. The city ordinances require some kind of compatibility with the neighborhood. Your large retail ordinance, which I also have a copy of it, it's the tab that is labeled LRO, that requires some kind of compatibility, either pedestrian access, vehicular access, with the neighboring community. When this ordinance was developed, there was a lot of discussion about how do we make that work when you've got a corner commercial site, and it's very difficult to get that kind of compatibility. In this case, we've been able to provide for access to the neighboring community, either through a driveway in the back here or some kind of pedestrian way off of this knuckle here. What we're trying to do is to keep people from going out onto the arterial, having to drive out to the arterial to get to the convenience store to get a carton of milk. We don't think it's safe for children to be on a busy thoroughfare arterial just to go to the store and go back home. I understand there are some concerns about that and not allowing commercial vehicles to go through the neighborhood, and frankly, we have adequate access without those driveways. This type of layout is easily blocked off, walled off along the back here to not allow for access. So if people are hung up on that access issue, we're okay with taking that access away, but we feel that that will force pedestrians out to the arterials and be not in compliance with the large retail ordinance. Tab number 17 in your packet, I added this because staff points out that this application is inconsistent with policy number 17 that ensures that adequate lands are set aside for neighboring, serving, neighborhood-serving, commercial uses adjacent to designated residential areas. In your staff report, staff conveniently left out the second part of that policy, and that is, it says, "Where land has not been set aside, permit neighborhood-scale commercial uses in residential areas when compatible with surrounding development." We feel that this is absolutely compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. This is a C1 neighborhood commercial shopping center that we're proposing to put on the south side of Taft Highway. This is not in competition with the C2 city-owned property across the street on the north side of Taft Highway. C2 is more of a regional retail use in nature and doesn't necessarily serve the neighborhood. We feel strongly that it's not appropriate to have children, people, pedestrians stopping traffic on an expressway to cross a busy expressway, Taft Highway, to get to a regional shopping center on the north side when you can easily serve that neighboring, that neighborhood community with a neighborhood commercial shopping center. The LRO-tabbed section there is, I've highlighted a number of ordinance requirements in that. It talks about accessibility, compatibility, pedestrian access, meandering sidewalks, pedestrian circulation. It has a whole list of items and standards that are to be considered when developing shopping centers. Also, in that section there are delivery, loading, solid waste operations. It talks about standards for having loading dock areas to keep down the noise, solid waste pickup. We can comply with all these requirements that the city has adopted in the large retail ordinance, and the large retail ordinance does apply to all shopping centers over 50,000 square feet. Also, wanted to point out access. We talked briefly about how staff thinks that commercial vehicles are going to come through the neighboring, the neighborhood. We can block this off, we can block this off, and still allow for pedestrian access to the neighborhood. Also, wanted to show this. This is just a slide that shows all of the tentative maps that are approved in this area. Track 6969, that's part of this application. We're taking a part of that subdivision. We have no problem giving up the rights to that subdivision. We realize that there are vested rights, there are traffic fees that are vested in that subdivision, but Dr. Singh is willing to give that up in order to redo that subdivision to allow for this shopping center to go forward. There are a total of 2,314 lots already approved in that area. If you take out the Kern Delta area, that's been purchased for recharge area, there are still about 1,200 lots that are approved in tentative maps. Also, wanted to share and point out on this slide that staff submitted and showed you earlier, the majority of this orange is R2, which is multifamily. It's a denser development. The LMR designation allows for up to 10 dwelling units per acre, so there's going to be a lot of residential on the south side of Taft Highway. North side of Taft Highway is already being built out. The C2...
Roger, would you speak into the microphone so we can hear you better when you...
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
The C2 that the city owns is surrounded by a sports park. Sports park is not really a good, compatible area around a commercial site. You need residences. When you have a tenant that comes along and looks at going in a residential, a commercial shopping center, they look for at least 1,000 rooftops around, within a mile of the center, and this has a lot of open space and sports fields. This is a good example of other areas that have shopping centers across the street. The half-mile separation is encouraged, it's not required. Most recently, we, in 2015, we processed a commercial shopping center at the corner of Panama and Ash Road, and I've included that as part of this packet to you. It's labeled Panama, and if you look through that, you'll see that a lot of the conditions of approval and policies that are identified in that application were reasons why staff recommended approval of that site, and these are the same policies that they're using to recommend denial of this site. I think the policies are being used inconsistently. This is just a subdivision layout of that site. It's the southeast corner of Panama and Ash. You'll see that there is a street, a local street, that goes and connects to the neighborhood that does allow for access, both vehicular and pedestrian, to the commercial center. It's also at the corner of two arterials. I've also included the benefits to the city. If the vesting map is given up, that would have totaled $675,556 in regional transportation impact fees. With a revised tentative tract at $12,870 per lot plus commercial, the benefit is a net increase of $884,000 to the city in regional impact fees. And finally, I'd like to just point out, Dr. Singh is a well-respected member of the community. He's a medical doctor that works with Dignity Health, both at Mercy Southwest and Mercy Downtown, and he sees a vision for this area to also provide for potentially urgent care. This is a map that shows the urgent care in the area. The site is this location here. I was told this morning that there is an urgent care that recently opened up at the Winco Center here on Panama Lane, but that's two miles away, and you can see that there's a huge void to serve the population out there. If you look at an aerial map, you'll see that there are houses under construction out there, there's several that are going, people that are going to be living there shortly, and we ask for your overturning and supporting our appeal of the recommendation for denial by the Planning Commission, and we're here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McIntosh. Is there anyone who would like to speak in support of staff's recommendation? In support? We have, we're at a time. I kind of interrupted, that we had 13 seconds left, but that's probably not enough of time for us to continue there. So moving on now to anybody who wants to speak in support of staff's recommendation? Yes. So this is support. They are denying. So if you agree with staff, now is the time to speak. Seeing none, I will close.
Anybody can speak in favor or you're against what you're talking about?
We, Mr. McIntosh already spoke in opposition to what they were speaking. We had 15 minutes for the entire group who were speaking opposing what staff was doing. So at this point, it is closed, and I will close the public hearing. We've heard from Mr. McIntosh, unless there's somebody who wants to speak to the other side of what staff is recommending, I am recommending, I am closing the public hearing at this time. Councilmember Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, good presentation on both sides. Okay, I think, you know, I have talked to staff about this, and it sounded to begin with like their main concern was the access into this proposed zone change into a shopping center. And I'm very familiar with the area and met with, certainly very aware, like I say, of staff's position, and met with Mr. McIntosh yesterday, and we went over all the details. I asked him to repeat a number of times the questions that I was asking. So I feel I understood quite well what is being proposed. Of course, it's a very, it's a zone change from residential into C1, C1, commercial. So the, Roger, to begin with, was there access into the shopping center from Ash? Was there always access? Because I talked to a commissioner today, and he thought he was not aware that to begin with, there was access into the shopping center off of Ash.
Roger McIntosh, Councilmember Sullivan, the, all of the site plans that we have submitted, both at the Planning Commission and tonight, showed access off of Ash Road. Yes.
Mm-hmm, okay. Well, he was mistaking then. And is this the appropriate time to be discussing, to make a definite decision about the access through the neighborhood? through the neighborhood? Is, who can answer that for me?
Councilmember Sullivan, can you repeat your question?
Okay.
I apologize.
Is the hearing tonight, is this the appropriate time to make a definite decision if there is going to be a wall built to avoid having, traveling through the community, through the neighborhood?
Sure, sure, I can answer that. So, to the first question regarding access from Ash, a correction to what was previously stated, the initial proposal that was submitted to staff and reviewed by the planning commission didn't have sufficient depth to provide a direct driveway on Ash. Instead, it used a little local street off of Ash that then connected to a commercial driveway inside of the neighborhood. So it was by Ash via a street through the neighborhood. So, the second part of your question, can we require walls now? Can we lock in the design now? The answer is no. The current request is for a C1 zone only. And if the C1 were approved, they would simply go through site plan review and pull a building permit with no additional extra conditions beyond our development standards.
Mm-hmm, I see. So that isn't the main issue right now, the access to the neighborhood?
Well, with the size that's proposed now, it would be very difficult to fit in the commercial driveway that's shown on the site plan presented tonight. That was conceptual, as Mr. McIntosh indicated. And perhaps Mr. Fidler can speak a little more to that as to why that would need to be studied further.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Sullivan, as you're aware, we just received the same layout that you received tonight, today as well. So we haven't had a full, enough time to fully evaluate it, but I do see issues with the design that is proposed. There is, for instance, the local street connection, there is a drive, a commercial drive approach that is very close to Ash Road on the local street. I know Mr. McIntosh said that they could eliminate that connection, but that connection does not meet standard, standards as well. And the drive approaches that he'd shown, shows the 200-foot and 150-foot distances between, but he didn't also incorporate that there's an additional length that's necessary for the right turn deceleration lanes leading into those drive, that drive access. So, without further review, we can't determine whether he developed enough space to develop a right turn deceleration lane. Because the shopping center is reaching up to 62,000 square feet, the number of trips for that site will require that right turn lanes are required for an arterial roadway. So, looking at it with the proximity of that residential road and the driveway that's proposed, that barely meets the 200-foot standard from Taft Highway, there's, doesn't appear to be enough distance between the local street, the access road, or the commercial driveway and Ash Road to develop the right turn deceleration for that site.
Okay. Well, McIntosh and associates feel very strongly that there is proper access. And we went over that in detail yesterday afternoon. You know, also, the word premature was mentioned several times, and I'm really surprised about that because it seems to me like that would be up to the owner. You know, if the owner has the interest and the ability and the willingness to invest in that corner, that's, that, that makes it, that makes it not premature in the way I'm looking at it. So I'm surprised that that would be, that would be a consideration, something that we're supposed to be, deny the project over, that it's premature. Okay, well, you know, the, this city council has a reputation for being business-friendly. Our city is supposed to be and is, I believe, strongly business-friendly. And this will provide jobs. We have a masterpiece of a development on the, on the northwest side of this corner that will be one of the finest in California, our sports park. And I think within a 10-year period, the two projects would be able to be a complement to each other. We are planning a lot of development, residences on the, on the south side of Taft Highway. It's a, it was called a thoroughfare. So I would think that it's a very appropriate location for a shopping center. A lot of traffic, many future planned homes. And so, I would have a hard time putting thumbs down to this. It's, a lot of, you know, money has been spent. And it would provide certainly a benefit to that part of town. So I will give it to the other, to hear the other comments from the councilmembers.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to follow up. Councilmember Sullivan asked a question if we could decide about the vehicular access between the two zones. And it seems to me that we could condition the general plan amendment zone change to not allow vehicular access and allow pedestrian access from the local streets to the commercial center if we wanted to go with this zone change. So, could you answer that again?
Councilmember Smith, through the mayor, you, in the past, there have been situations where conditions have been placed on zoning. But it's important to keep in mind that a zoning district is an entitlement to do anything and everything within that zone. So if you are a person purchasing property and you look up a property, you walk through it with your real estate agent, you see that it's a C1 property, you would assume that you can do everything within that C1 zone.
This is, this is also a general plan amendment.
It is, correct.
And general plans have conditions often?
Not typically, no. They have in the-
Every time I do one, general plans have-
Those mitigation measures. Another idea is that you could add the PUD combining district onto this request. And what that would do is require that the ultimate layout be approved by the planning commission. And that would ensure that there's an opportunity for the public and staff to review the design and ensure that it meets the standard.
Okay, well, I'm not going to recommend going there, but I will recommend a condition on the general plan that, and the client, the applicant said they didn't have a problem with it, to not have vehicular access between the residential and the commercial. I think that pedestrian access makes a lot of sense, and that works, and there's ways to do that. So, that's my concern, and that's the direction I would move. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a request, I won't make a condition, although it was made a condition on me, many times at general plan amendments and at site plan approvals, that if this is approved and you move forward with your shopping center, this is my particular cause, that you will design enhanced landscaping with, with more than minimum buffers from the road. If you want to know what things should look like, just drive by the marketplace, something you'll be proud of, and enhanced architecture, so that it's something that's, first, we have a beautiful park across the street that we all want to be proud of, and start this neighborhood off with first-class architecture and landscaping and set the tone for the whole region. I had, I had a condition called enhanced landscaping on my projects, but I'll just ask your request, and if you nod your head, I'll trust you'll do it.
Mr. McIntosh.
Actually, Councilmember Freeman, Taft Highway has a requirement to have 30-foot of enhanced landscaping. That is your standard. Without this project, the vesting map won't put in that 30-foot strip. So with the project, when it's approved, yes, there will be 30-foot of enhanced landscaping.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Freeman, anything further?
I'm finished.
Are there any other councilmembers who wish to speak? Councilmember Rivera.
I think it's just a rare occasion that I agree with absolutely everything that Councilmember Sullivan stated.
Oh, wow, victory, thank you.
And I want to give, and I want to give you kudos. I think, I think this particular project's, I mean, it'd certainly be a welcome addition to southeast Bakersfield, but I'll settle for Ward 6. And, and I think to, to Jackie's point, I think, you know, the, the burden and the risks of investment and, and business endeavors is on the owner, not on us. And so, you know, I'd be in full support of approving the zone change as well.
Anyone else? Councilmember Sullivan, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, we're talking about two negatives here, but I am in favor of the zone change. So I am not, so how would that, how would that be? I'm in favor, favor-
City Attorney.
Mayor, Councilmember Sullivan, if you'll allow me to perhaps phrase it for your consideration, that would be a resolution upholding the appeal and approving the general plan amendment to change the land use designation as stated on the agenda, with the two additional conditions as stated by the vice mayor and Councilmember Freeman, no vehicular access between the commercial and the residential, and the enhanced commercial landscaping 30-foot strip. And then a resolution upholding the appeal and amending the zone map again as presented on the agenda.
Is that what you meant, Councilmember Sullivan?
Perfect. I said that well. Thank you, Jenny, for translating for me.
So you have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. Let us take a seven-minute break right now. Before we come back, we have two more items that were on the consent. Now move to this. So we'll take a seven-minute break and then come back here. All right, we're ready to continue. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
We have a public hearing to consider general plan amendment number 17-0354, Moran Development representing Beach AC Properties LLC. The property owner is proposing a general plan amendment changing the land use designation from low, medium-density residential to high, medium-density residential on 38.01 acres, subject to conditions of approval, located generally north of McCutcheon Road, 1,300 feet west of Ash Road. A proposed mitigated negative declaration will also be considered.
Ms. Kitchen?
Honorable Mayor and Council, this request is as was read by the city clerk, and staff is recommending approval, and it was approved on the consent agenda by the planning commission. We're available if you have any questions.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. How many people would like to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? Just one? Okay, please come forward. And I read the timing earlier, so we have 15 minutes for those who wish to oppose or are in favor.
Just real quick, Mayor, I'm sorry. Mr. Nipp, I think you're here on the wrong one. This is item D as in dog. I think you're on item E.
I understand.
Okay.
No, I, my name is Gordon Nipp. I'm the vice chair of the local Sierra Club chapter. I hadn't really intended to speak to this particular project. We haven't turned, the Sierra Club has not turned in any comments on this. And, and the fact that the density is being increased here, going to high, medium residential density from, from low, medium residential density is a, is a real plus. So we're not opposed to the project, per se. But I do want to point out that there's an issue here. I glanced at the negative declaration for this project. I do want to point out there's an issue here that's very similar to the issue, to one of the issues that I want to speak to on the next project. And that is the cumulative impact of this and many other projects on air pollution. The, the negative declaration for this project tries to argue that this project's, that since the project's individual air pollution impacts are small, below the air district thresholds, then its cumulative impact to air pollution is insignificant. And, and, and so no mitigation is necessary for cumulative impact of this and dozens of other projects, for that matter, on, on air pollution. That violates not only logic, but, but SEQA. Let me just read you what the state SEQA guidelines state about cumulative impacts. And this is a quote, SEQA guidelines of 15355B, "Cumulative impacts can result from individually minor," as in this case, "but collectively significant projects taking place over a period of time." This is one of dozens of housing projects. And let me just say that, that it doesn't make any sense to, to, to say that there's no cumulative impact because, because, because this particular project's individual impact is small. The cumulative impact of dozens of housing projects is obviously huge. We have, we have week-long incidents of terribly unhealthy air quality. We fight it out with Los Angeles every year for the, for the worst air in the country. We should be addressing this cumulative impact. The, the air district says, on the same issue, this does not imply that if the project is below all such significant thresholds, it cannot be cumulatively significant. It is cumulatively significant, clearly. The negative declaration violates SEQA in this section by assuming cumulative air quality insignificance from project-specific insignificance. The next project has, has the same basic issue. What I see here is a, is a, is a pattern in practice of actually violating SEQA in this regard. I would suggest very strongly that, that you send this back to the planners and tell them to address the projects and this, and dozens of other projects' impact, to cumulative impact to our terrible air quality. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nipp. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? Seeing none, is there anyone who'd like to speak in favor of staff's recommendation? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and return it to council for comment and action. Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to clarify, is the applicant here? Okay, in review of this, you're talking about almost 40 acres with 613 apartment units in it. You're talking about a big piece of land and a mega complex. And with this high density and that concentration, I mean, if you compared it to, let's say, the, the communities of Fraser Park or Roseman, you'd probably have a similar population because once you, you know, put two to three people in each one of these units, you're going to have 1,500 to almost 2,000 people there. Both of those communities have sheriff substations. So what I would ask staff is that I'd like to have a PUD overlay, so we have a little bit of a say in this project. And Ms. Kitchen, if you could elaborate a little bit?
Certainly, Councilmember Parlier, through the mayor. What the PUD overlay would do is it would require that there be a second level of review by the planning commission at a later date. So instead of providing a simple standalone entitlement, there would need to be a specific site plan approved by a discretionary hearing process. In order to execute that, we would need to refer this project back for additional advertisement later to come back with a zone change to include R2 PUD combining.
Okay, so I'd like to make a recommendation that we send this back. Would it be back to the planning commission then?
The action item before you tonight is the general plan- The action item before you tonight is the general plan only, so you can refer that back to be re-advertised. That does not have to go back to the Planning Commission, but what would need to go to the Planning Commission is the zone change component because that is new. So we would process that and then bring both back together for council consideration at a later date.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion that we go back and re-advertise this. Is that correct, Madam City Attorney?
It is. Thank you, Councilmember Parlier.
All right, thank you.
Others who wish to speak on the council? Councilmember Vice Mayor Freeman, Vice Mayor Smith, sorry.
Thank you. Again, I'm a little confused. I think that Councilmember Parlier does not have a problem with the general plan amendment. Could we not approve that and deny the zoning? Is that what I heard?
You could approve the general plan amendment tonight, but there would be no requirement for the applicant to come back for a zone change. He has R2 already.
Right, but R2 does not allow the density-
It does, if you have the right general plan amendment. The R2 has a range of densities, depending on what your general plan is. He currently has the LMR, which would allow 281 units, but the R2 allows a flexibility of up to 661 units on this site with a general plan amendment.
And the HMR allows what?
The 661 ultimately, but he's requested 613.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
A public hearing to consider general plan amendment, zone change 17-0356. DeWalt Engineering, representing Rex Martin, the property owner, is proposing a general plan amendment changing the land use designation from low-medium density residential, high-medium density residential, and open space to low-density residential on 40 acres, subject to conditions of approval, and a zone change from residential holding to one-family dwelling on 40 acres, located generally south of Chase Avenue and east of Kern Canyon Road, SR 184. A proposed negative declaration will also be considered.
Ms. Kitchen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's a little musical chairs tonight. This request is almost the exact opposite of the one that you just considered, and it's also on the opposite side of town. It's a request to go from high-medium density residential down to low-medium density residential and a zone change to R1. This request originally included a little bit of R2. This is out off of the northeast. However, at the Planning Commission, the neighborhood appeared in opposition to the R2, and the applicant immediately withdrew the request for R2 and requested R1 only. Planning Commission recommended unanimous approval, as is staff tonight. This item was pulled from the consent agenda by the Sierra Club due to similar arguments that you just heard on the other project related to air quality. Those have been answered in detail in your staff report, and we're here if you have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Kitchen. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. How many people would like to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? So I see three. Would you all come forward and just sit in the front, please, so we can move through this quickly? And then, I guess there are four. Mr. Nipp, it looks like you're going to be first. Please introduce yourself and proceed. We have 15 minutes total for this section.
My name is Gordon Nipp. I am the vice chair of the local Sierra Club chapter. We've sent in several letters on this project, and I'll try to be brief and just let the Sierra Club letters on this project speak for themselves, but let me emphasize a couple of points. One, the point that I just made on this other project. The negative declaration here tries to argue that since this project's individual air pollution impacts are below air district thresholds, then its cumulative impact to air pollution is insignificant and no mitigation is necessary. This violates not only logic, but SEQA, state law. Clearly, any single contribution to air pollution may be unimportant, but if you add up all the individual contributions, the cumulative impact, you end up with the dirtiest air in the nation. We have week-long episodes of unhealthy air quality. The emissions from this project and the dozens of other projects add up to a point where one in six children have asthma. In their letter on this project, the Valley Air District even states, and I'm going to quote here, "Future development within the area will contribute to the overall decline in air quality due to increased traffic and ongoing operational emissions." The city is remiss in ignoring this overwhelmingly important cumulative impact. Send this project back to the planners and require them to come up with a policy for the city to do its part, to reinforce the air district's efforts, and to address this cumulative impact on air pollution of this and, of course, other projects. Similarly, for the climate change issue, the negative declaration states without evidence, "The project has no impacts that would be defined as individually limited but cumulatively considerable." Climate change, global warming, is arguably the defining issue for our species. Dr. James Hansen writes, and I'm going to quote here as well, "The stakes for all life on the planet surpass those of any previous crisis. The greatest danger is continued ignorance and denial, which could make tragic consequences unavoidable." The cumulative contributions of this and the dozens of other projects to climate change and greenhouse gas emissions must be considered significant. Send this project back to the planners and require them to come up with mitigation measures and a policy for the city to do its part to address the cumulative impact of this and other projects on climate change. On another front, biological resources. This project area is known potential habitat for several endangered species, San Joaquin kit foxes, blunt-nosed leopard lizards. They've actually been sighted on this property in the past. For the blunt-nosed leopard lizard, send this project back to the planners to require preservation of leopard lizard habitat elsewhere to offset the loss of this property. For the kit fox, keeping in mind that kit foxes adapt readily to the urban environment, send the project back to the planners again to require that it be designed with urban kit fox conservation measures in mind, perhaps including artificial kit fox dens and movement corridors, as suggested in the expert document that I attached to our first letter. I'll stop with this and just refer you to the many more details in the Sierra Club letters, and I thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Nipp. Next speaker, please. Please introduce yourself. We have 11 minutes left for the rest of you.
Mayor Go, Vice Mayor Smith, Counsel. I'm Steve Montgomery, the Chair of the Kern Quay Chapter Sierra Club, and in support of what Dr. Nipp was just pointing out, that we have among the worst air in the nation, and as much as I love Bakersfield, the one thing that could run me out of town is the air quality. And the size of this project that we're considering reminds me of my car. My car has a catalytic converter on it, and I might ask, why do I need a catalytic converter? Because in the, with the size of the air basin here, the amount of pollution my car puts out isn't very much, and it wouldn't really be deductible. But the cumulative effect of everybody's cars does make a difference, and so that's why I have a catalytic converter on my car. And because of the quality of our air in this basin, this, our community needs to be ahead of the curve on air pollution mitigation. We need to be looking at all aspects of the sources of pollution and setting a national standard for addressing these pollution matters. And that's about all I had to comment on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. Next speaker, please. Please introduce yourself and proceed.
My name is Catherine Smith, and I'm part of Executive Committee, Sierra Club. I've worked 30 years in Bakersfield as a health care provider. This is a statement about my beliefs. I do not believe the community's answers to local problems have to result in polarization, black and white thinking, like the Florida tragedy last week, here either for the students or the Second Amendment, for Israel or Palestine, Republican or Democrat, electric vehicles or smoke-belching diesel rigs. I do not believe the city of Bakersfield can only find answers to growth in more housing or focus on the environment only to get the best results for our children and their children. With respect to this building project, we need policies on the cumulative impact on air pollution and climate change. This project will impact or work to destroy habitat of a blunt-nosed lizard and kit fox. The developer needs to provide lizard habitat elsewhere or mitigation, additional conservation members for the fox, including artificial dens and movement corridors. Any housing project should also include adequate green space. I do believe we can continue to improve our air quality, address climate change, and expand the city. We ask for dialogue and cooperation. The polarization express needs to pause at the next station so that folks can board from both sides. Let's build for success in the long term and avoid ignoring some of the environmental needs. I do believe this will reap the greatest reward for all, short and long term. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Next speaker, please. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name is Marion Vargas. I'm a retired elementary school counselor, and I live in northeast Bakersfield. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. When I thought about coming this evening, I was thinking, what am I going to say, you know? And usually, I think I can come up with some really relevant things, but what seemed like very trite things came to mind, and they kept coming back and coming back. And so I thought, well, maybe they are relevant to this issue. The first is the story of the three little pigs. We all heard that, you know? It's a kid's story, right? Well, is that relevant to the city council and the city of Bakersfield? Well, I think most children's moral stories have something underneath it that is really valuable and a wisdom, and that is the little pig who built the strongest house is the one that is held up as being wise, and that's the way to go. Now, I'm not saying that the proposed houses in this community development would not be well-built, but in looking at the well-being, the bigger picture, as the third little pig did in building a very strong house, we need to look at the environment and the impacts. We do see the effects of global warming. We do see the effects of the climate in Bakersfield, where we have so much development and asphalt that our climate has changed. I came here in 1969, and, you know, now we don't get fog as much because we have so much asphalt, and, you know, there's not the tully fog that's, well, maybe it's good we don't get fog, but anyway. So think about that, please. And then, what was the other story? Oh, well, the admonition from the Bible, do not build, you know, where there's sand. Now, no, I'm not talking about the quality of the earth out there, but a good foundation for a community will include environmental, addressing environmental issues, mitigations, solar, electric vehicle support systems, and things like that. Certainly, the planning department, that I think gave such a wonderful presentation, and I agree with the recommendation on the first issue, I thought, wow, you know, but I'm sorry, that if you sent this back to the planning department with the idea of having an overall plan to address some of these issues for long-term well-being of our community, that would be really, really good. Then there's, the other thing that came to me in my crazy mind was the flu. Now, have you all had your flu shots? Are we not being told to get flu shots because of this flu epidemic, and so many people have been sick and dying? Well, considering environmental concerns and impacts and the need for mitigation is sort of like getting your flu shot. We're looking to the future of our community, of generations. Let's go back and send it back and take a closer look. In the 1990s, I was working at Thorner School, which is out in that area, and I had lots of yard duty, as they make counselors do, and I got valley fever. Well, it was because there was the impact of all the building that was going on in the same area out there, and all the dust was churning. And so, you know, there are effects, and there were lots and lots of students and other staff who got valley fever. Now, I'm not saying that this project is going to cause that. I mean that as a metaphor for if we ignore certain impacts that are, have been explained and alluded to, and that have scientific basis, if we ignore those because we can, you know, we're at risk and we're putting future generations at risk. What would it hurt to go back and have a general policy that would address these issues and protect us and the future of our children? And then there's one more thing that came to me as I was sitting there. They're all gone. And that is a stitch in time saves nine, and I remember learning that as a little girl from my mother, and it is true. I was just knitting out there to pass the time, and, you know, if you drop a stitch, it runs all the way down, and then you have a defective product or project because you didn't pay attention to the impacts of what you're doing. And I think by not looking at what is, you know, piece by piece, stitch by stitch, what is the cumulative effect of not having proper mitigation and not addressing these issues because you don't have to, because you can ignore them. I think it's not good planning, it's not building a good house, you know? And this is the big wide world, and you have the responsibility, and we as citizens have the responsibility, to raise these issues and hope and pray that you will give it some serious thought, even if you have to not vote on it now and think about it and then vote on it. Please, please do take that into consideration, and thanks a lot for listening to me.
Thank you, Ms. Vargas. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? We have a minute and 50 seconds left, so please introduce yourself and proceed.
My name is Anna Lomely. I'm not going to take very much of your time. However, I would like to go ahead and bring this to your consideration. We are thinking right now a lot about what is happening. We should really kind of take a look at the future also. It's kind of the irony of what's happened today. In the earlier part of the meeting, there was a great thing about the Children's Medical Center that's going to be here and how wonderful it's going to be, that our children are not going to go very far, you know, et cetera, et cetera. And a lot of these children are getting asthma, okay, and are getting, you know, lung conditions because of our air, because of the condition that we're not, we're building, we need the money, but the building is so fast that we forget what the impact is happening to our children. So keep in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lomely. Anyone else? We have 48 seconds left. Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Thank you. My name is David Campbell. I'm with the Sierra Club also. I believe I have only one point to make. There's been much concern about the addition of negative consequences on a given project being larger consequences. Same is true of positive actions. We are tempted to be cynical and dismissive of environmental efforts because our parts seem so small, but if many hundreds of municipalities, thousands of cities- seem so small, but if many hundreds of municipalities, thousands of cities take positive action to reduce air pollution and improve what we have to breathe, that adds up too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kim. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of staff's recommendation? Please come forward. Is there anyone else, just so we can gauge our timing? Go ahead and proceed. Please introduce yourself.
Yeah. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Counsel. My name is Adam Ojeda, and I am with the Walt Corporation, and we represent the applicant, Mr. Rex Martin, who was sitting behind me. So, you know, obviously, there's considerable opposition from the Sierra Club, and we have heard a lot of the same sentiments at Planning Commission. I think, for the most part, we've been working with the planning department, and I know that there's been a lot of back and forth between the planners and the Sierra Club. I think we're going to kind of defer a lot to, you know, what has, you know, what they've said. However, we will highlight... We do want to highlight a couple of things, you know, just kind of in response to what has been stated here tonight. First of all, as has been explained when this item was first brought up tonight, we are actually proposing to reduce the allowable densities that the existing land use was. We're going from LMR and HMR, taking it to LR and creating an R1 zoning that really is consistent with the... Both the areas that already have been built upon and also this area is kind of bound by existing track maps that have long since been approved. So we do feel strongly that it is consistent with everything else that has been approved for that area. And in response to a couple of things that I heard, I will say, to date, we have met all of the requirements of the planning department as a part of, you know, this application process, and that's included doing things like a hydrology study, cultural resources study, traffic analysis. We've given notification to existing residents. And also, I will highlight that we did a preliminary BIODA study, and that just kind of generally, you know, talks about the potential impacts to, you know, the environment, but also for protected species. And they did bring up the blunt-nosed leopard lizard, the kit fox. I will point out that as a part of the report and the study that we got there, to date, no sightings of these protected species have been seen in this particular area. The study does note that this area is known, generally known to be a part of the habitat of the leopard lizard, with further recommendations to do further studies as we get farther along in this process, to, number one, identify if any are actually seen just before we actually, you know, go to construction, which is still a ways away, and if we do see that, you know, what the mitigation measures would be in such a scenario. And one other thing that I will note with regard to air quality, obviously, that is a very real concern, you know, for any development in Bakersfield or Kern County in general. Anytime we do these projects, we do have to essentially permit through the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District, and I will... So part of what they do is they will assess sometimes, which can be considerable fees, that you can reduce, and we do this with other clients. We reduce these fees by putting in design features that essentially mitigate the impact of greenhouse gases and VOCs, and we do things like put on solar panels. We make sure that we have electrical outlets, you know, all around the exterior of the house so that the residents can use, you know, electric-powered, you know, lawnmowers and those sorts of things. And it even goes a little more in depth than that. It even affects what kind of equipment contractors use. It gives you credits if they use, you know, clean vehicles and kind of help on the front end when they're actually constructing the houses or, you know, whatever you're building at the time. So that's pretty much what I wanted to highlight, and like I said in the beginning, we have been in communication with the planning department. We believe that we've been compliant with all of their requirements up to this point, and we will respect and refer to their previous responses to the opposition thus far. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in support, in favor of staff's recommendation? Seeing none at this time, is there anyone who would like to rebut in opposition? Please come forward and sit in the front row. So we have five minutes for the rebuttal, total for everyone.
Thank you. Gordon Nipp again, Vice Chair of the local Sierra Club chapter. Just a couple of points. As far as reducing the density is concerned, the Sierra Club is not really in favor of reducing density. Higher density is better in many ways. Building ought to occur downtown, clearly, but higher density elsewhere is a plus as well because it could very well make it possible to have public transportation, make it feasible. If there are enough people, their public transportation could occur. Public transportation can help address air pollution. The study, the study that they're going to do about the blunt-nosed leopard lizard, I should point out that the study itself is no mitigation whatsoever. The area has been studied. There's a previous environmental impact report which stated clearly that there were blunt-nosed leopard lizards on site and kit fox dens, potential kit fox dens, on site. So there ought to be mitigation for that loss of habitat. The reason that that species, the reason that any species is endangered is because of loss of habitat. The habitat ought to be replaced. There's a mitigation measure that the city ought to put in place. The indirect source review rule, Rule 9510 for the Air District. The Air District does require a certain amount of mitigation for air pollution impacts, but their requirements only mitigate about half of the air pollution associated with this and other projects. Hence, there is still a lot of air pollution associated with all these projects. Hence, there is a cumulative impact from all these projects to air pollution that the city ought to be taking on, that the city, if they care at all about having clean air in Bakersfield, ought to take on, ought to... You should be requiring mitigation measures. I would point out as well that there is a potential new version of Title 24 state regulations as far as energy is concerned, which probably, beginning in 2020, will require all projects to have solar photovoltaics on new residences. Now, this project, if you approve it now, will be able to get by without that requirement. You should be requiring that this project has photovoltaics on its... Solar photovoltaics on its houses. So just a couple of things. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nipp. We have about two minutes left. Next speaker, please.
Very quickly, adding on to Mr. Ojeda's comments about how they've gone over there and they haven't seen anything. The reason for that, as you could remember in the Bakersfield Californian, because there's more people out there, there also has been more shootings. There was a group of carcasses that were found out there because of people went shooting. And one other thing is that right now is the time for them to hibernate, and they're not coming out there, but they are there. We do see them, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mrs. Lomely, for the record, would you just state your name, please?
I am Sullivan. Sorry. Anna Lomely.
Thank you.
Okay, next.
Next speaker, please.
Thank you. Catherine Smith again. While his plans are impressive, and he is making a good-faith effort to try to address this, which I think is positive, I think that waiting until you spot species on site when an EIR has already been done should be questioned. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Is there anyone else? We have one minute left. Seeing none, is there anyone who would like to rebut in support? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and return it to counsel for comment. Councilmember Sullivan, this is your ward. Would you like to speak?
Yes. Appreciate the comments that have been made.
Pardon me, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's in Ward... I'm the wrong ward.
There was an error on the document. It's actually in Ward 3. Thank you, yes.
Sorry. Ward 3? Well, he's not here, so whoever... Councilmember Sullivan, go ahead if you wish to speak at this point.
Well, good comments. Interesting, but I will support the staff's recommendation on this issue. Thank you.
Anyone else? Vice Mayor?
I just feel like, since it's in Ward 3, that we should wait until Councilmember Weir is present to make the motion. So would it be appropriate to ask for a continuance?
Vice Mayor Smith, Councilmember Weir was called away late with a little notice on a personal matter, but I did have the chance to speak with him. He indicated to me that if it looked like there was a chance that anything other than approval might occur, he would appreciate being there for the vote. So other councilmembers haven't spoken. I don't know whether that is being contemplated or not, but that was his comment to me this afternoon.
Appreciate that.
I would just note also, Vice Mayor, that, again, if we do continue this, since it is a GPA, it will hold up all of the other GPAs. And just as a matter of record, I would, again, like to point out that I think the Sierra Club is holding this project hostage. All of their comments have been addressed by staff in the previous admin reports to Planning Commission as well to the city council. You heard a lot of, this is what you ought to do. This is what you should do. Staff and the developer followed the law. It may be very nice to come up here and say what you should do and that you should set higher standards, but that doesn't mean that this is the project that we need to pull aside and establish those larger general policies for. So again, if there's a thought that you may want to turn this project down or vote against staff approval, then certainly, I think, a two-week continuance out of respect for Councilmember Weir is appropriate. However, if there's a majority of you that would like to go ahead with staff's recommendation, I would encourage you to vote tonight so that we don't hold up the other GPAs that you already voted on.
Would you like to continue, Vice Mayor? We have some others who are buzzing in, so...
I just would retract my statement, I guess, with the information I've heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. Jackie Kitchen, could you explain a little more the mitigations that are incorporated into the project? For example, I thought the California Energy Standards, certainly by 2020, required that you couldn't have a zero-energy home without going solar. All of the builders I know say they have to go solar to meet the state requirements, and they're almost there now. That has the most... The largest effect on reducing greenhouse gases is when houses produce zero net energy. I know the city, before I retired, had come up with new water standards so that we would drastically reduce water consumption, not only from low-flow toilets, low-flow showerheads from the state, but locally on our landscaping to have very small areas. I think it was like 75% has to be in bushes, no spray heads, all sorts of things for water conservation. So I know a lot of this is policy now that has been put in place over the last five or 10 years to address an awful lot of these environmental concerns. Are there... So I'm a little confused when we're going to have zero-energy homes before they can build a project. Zero is zero. I have trouble with accepting that they are doing virtually nothing on mitigation when no other state in California, no place in the world does this type, has this kind of requirements. It's California. These are as close to perfect homes as are built anywhere. So I think the state and Bakersfield has... And I think people would back me up, and they've done enormous new policy, global policies here to address mitigation of the environment. There might be some more things we could do with a little more green space, but I think 90% of the things that can be done are now built into policy. So I honestly don't know what additional things should be added as global policies here. It seems like if you follow the rules now, and this has added probably 10% to the cost of a home, which severely does impact affordability. We heard people from the homeless shelters today saying what a severe problem we have with affordable housing. All of our mitigations are good for the environment but very bad for many of our people who can now no longer be housed. So it seems to me this applicant has followed all the rules, and the rules are pretty strict and do a lot of good for the environment. So I tend to be supportive of their general plan amendment.
Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't think I'd heard a motion, so I was going to go ahead and make a motion to approve staff's recommendation.
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak before we vote? You have a motion? Please catch your votes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Council and mayor's statements.
Is there anyone who would like to speak? Seeing none, I just... Where is your blinking light?
Let's leave it at the wheel.
Here we are. Councilmember Freeman.
Yes. I have a matter that I would like referred to the Planning and Development Committee that I'm on. I have some concern for the quality of the commercial landscaping we have in town and some of our standards. I don't think we're screening parking lots and cars and headlights as well as we could. The best... The people who do do it went way beyond the standard. If you go to the marketplace, you won't see the headlights coming. If you go, if you look at State Farm, you won't see them. If you look at the Riverwalk. But most other projects, those headlights are straight out at you, and you look at cars and sees of pavement. Most communities, I'll say, the communities we all like to visit and come back and rave about don't allow this. It takes tiny tweaks to our existing standards, like letting a hedge grow 12 inches higher, very simple things. I'd like this issue studied a little bit, refer to the Planning and Development Committee so we can see if there's, I would call them, tweaks to our urdnits that can... The little tweaks make a major impact in the visual appearance of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to briefly mention the loss of Reverend Billy Graham this morning. Just a wonderful, wonderful example of strong, unwavering faith and just a true evangelist that had the same simple message for nearly 70 years. I had the pleasure of going to two of his crusades, one probably 68, 1968, at the LA Coliseum, and then when he was in Fresno, just right after 9/11. And it was just so... I'm so thankful that I had that opportunity and that experience. It was wonderful. So anyway, he's home, and I just appreciate all that he gave to our country and the world. So anyway, he's home and, and just appreciate all that he gave to our country and the world and that his dedication to families and, and just bringing people to an understanding of their faith in Jesus Christ. And so, anyway, it was very, 99 years old. It was touching to hear that he had passed, but what a, what a life well-lived. So it was wonderful that we appreciate having him in our, in our world. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'd like to congratulate staff on receiving the Downtown Bakersfield Association Downtown Beautification Award, represented by Ms. Kitchen and Ms. Hoover. Thank you for the new water fountain and lighting, Centennial Plaza, Mill Creek, senior apartments, great job, staff. I know it was a team effort, but congratulations to all. And if there is nothing further, we stand adjourned at 7:44.